Intravenous 205 is being brought to you by Momentum Leaders. With more than 20 years advancing women in leadership, presenting its biennial leadership conference on Thursday, March 21st at the BJCC. Men and women are welcome to register for inspiring keynotes, 20 educational breakout sessions, and networking opportunities with 1,500 other professionals. Get to your next level leader with Momentum. Registration and information at momentumleaders.org/conference. The conference is nearly sold out, so don't wait to get your spot. That's momentumleaders.org/conference. I have, um, I gotta let you off the hook because I don't have a joke. You don't have a joke, so next time we owe the people two jokes.
Okay.
All right. Um, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
To our Birmingham City Council President, Darrell O'Quinn, who is the City Councillor for District 5. And, um, I just invited our council president here to just kind of give us some what's up with the city council, with the city. Um, your priorities. I'm surprised that the sky isn't falling. There's a white guy who's the president of the city council. And contrary to popular belief, you know, in my opinion, from my seat, all is well. So, um, first things first. Today is, um, an election day. And I would love to get your words on that. Whatever those thoughts may be, but be sure we close it with, um, there's still plenty of time to get to the polls to vote.
Absolutely. Yes. Polls close at 7:00 PM. Um, yes, today is Super Tuesday. Um, it's always important to exercise your right to vote. Um, you know, even if you choose not to vote, you're still participating. You're allowing someone else to make decisions on your behalf. So, um, there's no such thing as not being a part of our government system. Um, you either choose to be an active part of it or, or not. And when you don't vote, you're giving away your right to have a voice in who is elected to represent you in, in government. So definitely really important. Um, we have some judges on the ballot today. Uh, hopefully everyone listening to this podcast will never have to appear before those folks. Nevertheless, it may be valuable to you. Um, you know, if you have to, uh, be in that situation, um, having known who you're voting for. So, yeah.
That's a great perspective. That's a great perspective, knowing the, um, capabilities, but also temperament.
Right.
Of, of those who are sitting on the bench. Um, Sid, you weren't feeling well last week. I'm glad you're better.
Mm-hmm.
How's the wife?
She's doing excellent. Um, she actually just started a new position with Jones Valley Teaching Farm, uh, yesterday. So she is, uh, now Farmer Christina. And she's, she's working at Abendale Elementary currently.
That's awesome. Um, so let's just, uh, jump right into it. I want to know, first of all, you know, you're fresh out of council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, tell us what happened today since we were, uh, kicked off of Facebook this morning. Uh, so I got a hot take for everybody. This is what happened in council meeting today. And then bring us home with, you know, where we are and, you know, just your thoughts on where the city is right now.
Yeah, um, a couple of things right off the top of my head. Um, the city is going to be applying for a federal funding opportunity to the tune of $21 million to do some critical repair work at the port in Birmingham. A lot of folks don't know that there's a port in Birmingham, but there is out on the west side. Um,
I saw them talking about that the other day in budget and finance or one of those committee meetings.
Right. Yeah. So one of the, uh, bulkheads at the port needs to be repaired. It's an expensive project. Um, and so anyway, we're hoping to get some federal assistance with that. Um, another item was approving UAB to install a couple of license plate.
Hold on.
Okay.
Before we leave the port, um, you guys did fund a last leg of something, the, the, with regards to a bulkhead or something or?
Right.
And, and, um, then tell us the importance of the port and expanding the economy and, and how it all ties in.
Yeah. So the port is a really important component of the overall economic development plan for the, the city of Birmingham specifically, but I think it's also important to our region. Um, for, you know, folks that may not know, Birmingham Port is connected to, uh, the Gulf of Mexico, you know, you can, it's 330 something miles, I think. Um, but you can move cargo up, uh, the Warrior River, um, to the, the Locust Fork, uh, in West, you know, Jefferson County. And therefore, you know, there, it's, it's an important, uh, connection. There's a lot of commodities that come in through there. So coal and, um, things that would be loaded onto, to barges. Um, but they're expanding their capacity. They've added a warehouse so that they can store items that need to be kept out of the weather. So steel coil is one of the big things that they're looking at housing there. Um, but the port by itself is not the whole puzzle. Um, the port is directly connected by short rail to the old Insley Works site, which is our largest industrial developable site. It's, it's over 600 plus acres. Um, and since US Steel, you know, has not been active there, it's, it's, it's not really doing anything to contribute to the local economy. So we see an opportunity, um, to work with US Steel to, to reactivate that site. And again, it's, it's a large, very large piece of land. It's our only mega site that's available to us currently in the city of Birmingham. Um, and, and we believe that there's an opportunity there by connecting, you know, that site via the short rail to the port. Um, there's just, you know, a lot of things that could, could happen. And then this is really important in the context of the expansion of the Port of Mobile. Um, you know, the Build Alabama Act, uh, funded a widening and deepening, deepening of the channel and at the, at the Mobile Port. Um, so there's going to be a lot more cargo coming into the port. There already is. And there's going to be a need, you know, to also move commodities, um, via water, um, inland. And, and in terms of moving, you know, material, the most efficient way to move large quantities of material is over water.
Is it the greenest?
I think, I believe it is the most efficient. Now, over land, it's, it's rail is the most efficient.
And I'm just saying, I would think over water would be even greener.
Right. Yes, absolutely.
Than transported by rail. So anyway, I, you know, I wanted you to really delve into that to, so people could see the big picture. As it relates to Birmingham Port and, and why it's important.
Right.
Um, and then what was the second thing you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, just a minor item. Um, you know, UAB is adding a couple of, uh, cameras that are going to be on the public right of way. So the city had, has to authorize them to, to do that. Um, you know, that is a small piece of a overall larger strategy to address, uh, crime prevention in, in the city of Birmingham. Um, you know, we do not have a lot of folks who are clamoring to be law enforcement officers anymore. And so by necessity, we're having to expand our technological capacity to, you know, sort of fill some of that gap. And, um,
I, I just vaguely remember a guy saying several years ago, and he's been saying it over and over, more cameras, more cameras. And I, I mean, he sounded crazy at the time, but to echo him, more cameras, more cameras. I think more cameras are good.
Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, at the residential level, what I hear from, you know, constituents is, um, you know, they'll see an item on the agenda saying the city's, you know, getting cameras. And, and, you know, when I go to the neighborhood and share that information with them, the question is not, you know, why are you guys buying cameras? It's when are you going to put a camera in my neighborhood?
That's right. That's right. So, um, I just say that to say, um, especially during this time where, um, not only are our police numbers kind of low, but our community doesn't want to participate in the public safety realm by telling what they know, please kill this no snitching culture. Um, but I, like you said, it's efficient. Um, and, and you never know what you're going to catch going or coming. So I just think the more, the more locations, the better.
So the big item that passed, uh, at the council meeting is we imposed a moratorium on, uh, new car washes, uh, across the city. These automated car washes, um, that we see popping up here and there.
Why?
So there are a couple of situations that are developing where, um, property owners are contemplating putting these adjacent to residential areas. That's our primary concern. Um, the, the, the car washes have a lot of, uh, forced air or blowers. You know, there's the, the dryers as you're driving out. And then there's the, the vacuum, vacuums that are running, you know, constantly. Um, and, um, you know, what we've heard from residents in the areas where these car washes are being contemplated is, is that, you know, they're concerned about how that might impact the, their quality of life. Um, there's also just a concern that, you know, this is a, um, business model, sort of like self-storage, uh, that we faced a, a few years ago that's rapidly expanding. And, um, a- as it stands currently, we have a, uh, our zoning allows these to be placed in a lot of areas that, um, you know, we're now thinking that's probably not a good idea, uh, to, to just have a unrestricted proliferation of these types of businesses. So this moratorium hits the pause button on new development for 180 days. Um, during that time period, I've, uh, suggested that to the council that we have a, a public hearing to get public input on, um, how folks feel about it, just so that that's actually on the record. You know, we've received numerous emails and phone calls and things like that. Talked to folks, uh, in the community. Um, but the, you know, the public meeting offers the opportunity to actually get, uh, this documented in some meeting minutes and be a part of the official government record. So, um, but ultimately what we're, what we'll be looking to do is to adjust our zoning code to reflect what citizens want to see, where, you know, they, um, want these types of businesses to be operating.
I remember back when, um, the public storage places were a problem. And, uh, just like then I asked why? Because at face value, I was like, why is that an issue? And then once you hear how it may be negatively impacting your neighbors, it's like, oh, that, that does make sense. So I appreciate you explaining the impact that those.
On that one, I think we got a big win, um, because, you know, the Sticks and Stuff building that's here in the Civil Rights District, uh, was proposed to be self-storage. Um, you know, there was probably going to be no more than four or five employees in, in this big building in the heart of our Civil Rights District. Um, and we imposed the moratorium and then the developer said, okay, I gotta do something else. So now we have, you know, Next Tech, which is the next phase of Innovation Depot. And we have hundreds of high-paid, high-wage workers working in that building. Some new companies that are new to Birmingham. So I, I can't, you know, imagine another scenario where that worked out, could have worked out any better.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Uh, anything else from the meeting you want to cover?
Yeah, we, um, also made an announcement and you may have wanted to get around to this later, but we made an announcement about a upcoming budget town hall that we have for, uh, planned for March 18th at Battle Auditorium, 6:00 to 7:30 PM.
Say that again?
Yeah. So Budget Town Hall, March 18th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Battle Auditorium. This is a collaboration between the Birmingham City Council and Mayor Woodfin to educate people on how the city's budget process works. As city councillors, uh, we've had quite a bit of frustration over the years, um, in that we are mandated by the Mayor Council Act to hold a public hearing on the mayor's proposed budget, uh, during, you know, that usually occurs during the month of May, early June. And so we are required to conduct this meeting on something that we didn't create.
Mm-hmm.
And that we do not have, uh, any authority to amend in any way, um, without the, the mayor explicitly, you know, agreeing to those amendments. So what those public hearings have looked like is, you know, non-council members sitting at the dais, citizens coming one after the other, expressing, you know, concerns. Um, uh, and these are just generally the, you know, the same things that you might hear, you know, wanting a blight addressed in their neighborhood or?
A great example is the nonprofits. They always come forward at budget time furious that their budget has been cut, cutting your heads off.
Right.
And you guys really have no input.
Yeah.
In, in that happening other than advocating.
Yeah. So, um, this was really, you know, aimed at, um, better educating, you know, folks about how government works. And that's something that, that the council is trying to do on a more comprehensive scale too, that we often find ourselves in the position of, of having to do that, to how, having to explain to people, look, this is how your government is designed and how it functions. So we, the, the, in the past, we have created a booklet that's a municipal civics 101, um, that goes through basic things like explaining that just like you see at the federal level and state level, there are three parts of government, the executive, the legislative, and the judicial. Our city government is, is no different. Um, and, you know, thus, uh, the, the council in particular is important for us because the council is often, um, on the front lines of receiving citizens' concerns. And, you know, they're saying, hey, look, you know, I, I voted for you. I want this, you know, situation resolved. Um, it could be a plethora, plethora of different, you know, scenarios. Um, but that's not what the legislative branch of government does. Uh, no city councillors are on a garbage truck picking up garbage or filling potholes or cutting weeds. Um, so, uh, we can advocate, you know, on behalf of our constituents to get those situations addressed, but we're legally prohibited from giving directives to city employees uh, in those other departments. Um, so again, we're trying to educate the, the public about how government works. And this Budget Town Hall is something that we're doing in collaboration with the mayor, uh, towards that end.
Now, um, in closing, I'd love for you to talk about, you know, your thoughts on where we are as a city. Um, where we are as it relates to your own priorities, your own goals. And, um, I, I start by, you know, you, you're our transportation guru and we just got, uh, a huge grant to, um, to, to the MACs and, and to the regional. Um, could you talk about that real quick and then finish with, um, where you think we are?
Yeah. So there's a number of different things happening on the transportation front, um, in the city of Birmingham. And, um, you know, one of the things that I'm most excited about is that, uh, we in city government, um, primarily led through our Department of Transportation, are really redesigning the city. Um, at, at our streets are the public infrastructure that most people are use on a daily basis and are intimately familiar with. Um, but over the years, uh, we have gotten away from being multimodal and really become very automotive dependent and especially automotive dependent in, meaning that you have to own a car and I have to own a car and he has to own a car and everybody else has to own a private vehicle if you want to be successful in the city of Birmingham. People need to understand that that is a tax. That is a tax on living in the city of Birmingham. If you want to make it here, the probability of your success increases by a factor of 100 times if you own your own automobile. Um, that, you know, for a lot of folks, looks like about $10,000 a year or more if you have to go out and buy a new vehicle. Um, so the city is actively, uh, trying to make the city multimodal. That means redesigning our street infrastructure such that if you want to, to walk, you know, there's public facilities that easily allow you to do that. If you want a bike, uh, if you want to use public transit or some other alternative mode, all of that is available to you. That hasn't been, you know, the case, uh, here in the city of Birmingham. And, and, and again, you know, our public infrastructure, our streets really reflect what our priorities are when it comes to transportation. So you're seeing more bike lanes, uh, pop up. You're seeing sidewalks get fixed. You're seeing ramps on those sidewalks be converted to ADA ramps. Um, so we're, that's exciting to me because it's really reshaping how Birmingham feels at the street level. Um, even down to implementing tra- traffic calming measures in residential streets. I've never encountered anyone, a business owner or a resident who says that the traffic on the street that they're interested in moves too slow.
Right. But what has cracked me up is like downtown in particular, everybody wants to stop the, the speeding and the donuts and whatnot. But then when you put the barriers down, people fuss about that too. So downtown is the one exception to that rule. But like you said, most people want the traffic to slow down. Particularly through neighborhoods.
Yeah. I mean, on, you know, in the, the, an grant, uh, that Congresswoman Sewell, uh, announced last week, um, is especially an exciting project because it's going to connect the Civil Rights District to the, uh, Legion Field via Graymont Avenue. Um, and it's going to be, you know, what we're calling an urban trail. Uh, it'll be one of our first, uh, protected bike lanes on Graymont Avenue. Um, and again, it's important to, to have that sort of, those sort of options available because personally, you know, I don't believe that it should be necessary for you, you know, to go out and buy a vehicle in order to be successful here. I mean, one of the big issues in Birmingham is, is that we have lost population, um, somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, 160,000 people, uh, since, you know, approximately 1960 or 70. And one of the things that I feel that we can do is to make it more cost-effective to actually live in the city of Birmingham. And by, you know, redesigning our streets such that you don't necessarily have to own a car, it can make the difference between somebody saying, okay, I'm going to move out to Alabaster, um, and buy a house out there and spend, you know, an hour and a half to two hours every day in the car commuting, um, versus them saying, hey, you know, I'm going to look for a house in Smithfield and be close enough to ride my bike to work, you know, downtown or on the south side.
Outstanding. Um, any shout-outs before you go closing minutes? I want to get you out of here on time?
Yeah. I mean, I will say this, uh, the Birmingham City Council is in, in great shape. Um, this is, you know, certainly since I've been there, one of the most cohesive councils. Um, I feel like I've had, I've, you know, I've only been there, you know, one and a half terms now, but there's a big transition, you know, when you have a council leadership change in, in the president's spot especially. Um, so I feel like this is my fourth council that I've been with. Um, and, um, the group is, is, you know, there's no huge personalities that sort of dominate conversations on the council. Um, we're getting along great with the mayor, uh, for the most part. Um, and, um, you know, as far as my priorities, um, really focusing internally and getting the, the council office in better, better shape is, is really a big part of that. So, um, you know, folks have asked me what my priorities are. And, and I think, you know, they expect, um, me to talk about public safety and, um, code enforcement or animal control or something like that. And yes, all of those things are always important. But what the one thing that I think? And yes, all of those things are always important. But what the one thing I think that's different for me um, from, you know, coun- past council presidents is I'm making it a priority for the council office to get its house in order and be better organized. Um, because one of the things that I've seen is, is that um, the council, councillors, individual councillors will only ever be part-time. Um, the, the way the job is set up, it is just not possible to make a living being a city councillor. Um, folks have, have got to, you know, get out there and do something else or be retired or independently wealthy or have a rich spouse or something like that. Um, so it's really important for the, the office to function well and for our staff that supports us um to be uh operating at, at a high capacity. Um, so that's one of the things that I'm really focused on. I'd say another thing is, is um really making the most of our public outreach efforts. One of the, the best things that I think that has happened to the council in, you know, the past decade, and I really have to credit my predecessor Jonathan Austin for doing this, is uh creating a public, public information office uh inside of, of, of the council. That's really increased our visibility. Um, and, you know, we, we love those guys. Um, so my, one of my priorities is sort of to take that to the next level, to maximize um, the capacity of our pub- public information team and make sure that we are meeting people where they are. Um, because people consume information in a variety of different ways. Uh, so we wanna have a presence on multiple platforms um and be sharing information uh with our, the people that we represent and, and making it easy for them to participate in local government.
It's, um, it's just so appropriate that you closed there because that was the one thing that I wanted to close on and compliment um you all on is you're communicating very well. And as a ci- citizen, um, I really appreciate that. Um, the, the various ways to engage, we appreciate that. Volunteering for page pals or anything else can be at the click of a button. So um, I, I just, it's noticed and, and appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanna thank my friend and our city council president, Daryl Loquin, for joining us. I wanna thank you all for watching and listening. And as always, a huge shout out to Creed sixty-three and Urbanham dot com. God bless.
Hello, I'm Greg Ramsey, a board-certified family nurse practitioner and owner of Premier Healthcare Solutions. At Premier, we provide a full-scale primary care and preventative healthcare services across the lifespan for adult men and women in a concierge fashion. We pride ourselves on transparency and unlimited access to our patients without the hassle of long wait times and hasty visits. Think of us as having your own medical provider on speed dial for any of your healthcare needs. For more information regarding our practice, please call two O five, five O two, seven two four one or book an appointment online at premierhealth-care.com.